Well, it's 5:30. Good afternoon. We do have a quorum. I'm calling this meeting to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, and realign the regular session, or call to executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is not the intention of the City of Bastrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group, neither is it the intention of the council to allow a member of the public to slur the performance, honesty, and/or integrity of the council as a body, or as any member or members of the council individually or collectively, or members of the city staff. Accordingly, profane, insulting, and threatening language directed toward council or any person in the council's presence will not be tolerated. We'll be going into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551-071 and 551-072 to seek the legal advice of legal counsel regarding pending a proposed real estate purchase and sale agreement with Capstick Development Group Limited and related matters involving Pine Forest Unit 6. City Council shall convene in to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding recent legislation, certain real estate projects, possible hotel development in the Bastrop Civic and Exhibit Center. And to see, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding matters related to the economic development expenditures, incentives, and sales taxes. It is 5:33, and we are in executive session. Calling me ready? Thank you, sir. It is 6:30. We are out of executive session and back into regular session. We are very pleased to have some outstanding young folks with us. Mason Patton, if you will step forward, please. You're okay, come on, come on. We have Leovani Gottschall also, and Juniper Moore. And these young folks are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, both flags. Y'all ready? All right. Everybody, please stand.
(Inaudible) flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas high, our legitimate history, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give these young folks a round of applause. Y'all will stand there, turn around, Colin's gonna take pretty pictures of y'all. Outstanding. Thank you, guys. And thank the parents for bringing them out. If you'll remain standing, we're gonna have Reverend Bob Long, one of our police chaplains, is gonna lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. I believe what you said, and I agree. Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day in Bastrop, Texas. It's a little on the warm side, Lord. We could use some cooler weather and probably need rain even more than that. So our petition is that you bring rain to Bastrop. And we just ask that you guide this session of the council tonight, that they would have your wisdom and make good and godly decisions. Lord, we thank you for everyone that works in City Hall. We thank you for our new mayor and council. We thank you, Lord, for those who work out in this heat. We also pray, Lord, for our fire department and police department that watch for us even when we're asleep. We're grateful for your provision for us. We're here today because you have provided for us in every way, and we want to give you Thanksgiving for that. And we thank you for the opportunity to live and work and play and pray in Bastrop County, Texas, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Long. Y'all may be seated. Thank y'all all for coming out. We're gonna move very quickly to the mayor's report. Counsel, on June the 30th, I went to the best breakfast in Elgin, exchanging information with the cities, the other cities within the county, the county, as well as the school districts. On Friday, July the 7th, I participated in a community support funding discussion, which was a very robust discussion. I really like the groups that participate in bringing goods and services to our community. On July the 1st, Saturday, I did my first official duty as a mayor outside of City Council, and I was a judge in the Pet and Pal Parade, which is a very stressful position to be in. But we handled it quite well. I was able to ride in the parade from the courthouse to the opera house. I want to make sure that we give thanks to all the participants that come out. They put a lot of work into it. And certainly, I want to provide our thanks to the organizers of the Pet and Pal Parade, Debbie Denny and Debbie Moore, as well as our own Kathy Danielson, who participated quite heavily in that. And lastly, I want to invite everybody to come to our Boards and Commission Volunteer Fair on July 26th, beginning right here in City Hall, in council chambers at 4:00 p.m. on that date. We invite any and all to attend and hopefully sign up to participate on our boards and commissions. That concludes my report. Councilmember Crouch.
You do. I don't think I've ever done that, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Kind of in shock here. I got to do a lot of the things that the mayor did. July 4th fireworks were really good. I think we had 16 minutes of fireworks, and it was the City of Bastrop's first time to put that on, so.
Thank you.
Kudos to them for doing it on a short notice, and they did an excellent job with that. Also, it's Recreation Month. I missed a skateboard demo at the new skate park, but I heard it was a nice event. And there's also a community bike ride that's gonna happen this weekend on July the 15th. And I want to just extend an invitation to anybody that has a bike and can come out and ride, and I think the path is gonna be through all the parks in town, starting at Fisherman's Park at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. So if you can do that, please come and do that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I think it was an 18-minute display of fireworks, but...
Was it 18? Okay.
No, but you brought it up, so I love it. I love it. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I started, or ended the week, actually, after our last meeting, taking a tour of the Children's Advocacy Center. I really wanted to thank Cynthia Eck for giving me the tour and explaining what they did there for child sexual abuse, a very, very important job that everyone there's doing, and I want to thank them all for that. And I also attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting that they had, and I just wanted to thank all of the commissioners who are on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and just let you know that we do appreciate you. I also attended, on July 1st, the Big Bang Celebration. Went to the Pet Parade, which I was so happy that the Pet Parade came back after five years. And it was always a highlight, and it was even more of a highlight this time, having it come back. Also, went to the downtown activities where we had a great vendor set up and participated there, and did not participate in, but did watch the cornhole tournament. And I have to take my hat off to them because they were out there in the middle of the street in the sun, and it was really hot that day. So thanks for everything that went on at the Big Bang Celebrations. It was quite a success this year. Then last week, I was the emcee at the Farm Street Opry, which was more fun than I could have ever dreamt of, because the Farm Street Opry is one of my favorite things that the city has. And the great thing about last week was Kathy Danielson let us know that there were 330 attendees there, so our numbers are back to what they were before COVID. So that was a really positive report to get. And I encourage anyone who has not been to the Farm Street Opry, I would say a huge percentage of the people there are from out of town, which is great. We get a lot of tourists, but I would love to see a lot more hands show up from Bastrop, too, when they see who's coming. So please, support the Farm Street Opry. It's a great event. And I believe that's probably the end of it. I ended out with emceeing.
Outstanding. And because, evidently because you emceed it, the final count was 365.
Well, that's why.
So there you go.
There we go.
There you go. And it's really coming back, and yes, everybody should attend that. Thank you so much. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. So prior to our last council meeting, several things happened. The Juneteenth weekend happened, and I did participate in the parade, went to the car show. It was really hot that day, too. But I did make some events, and then I went down to the park later on that evening for the Juneteenth weekend. So great job putting that together, and thank everyone for coming out. I did attend the Big Bang Celebration, watched the fireworks. I kind of wait till the sun goes down, and then I venture out, and I got down there just in time to watch the fireworks, and then I was out. Prior to that, I, along with then-Mayor-elect Nelson, went to Veterans Bowling Night at the Bowling Alley. I really, really enjoyed participating in that event. I'm not a veteran, but I like to go hang out with them. They're a fun group of people, and it's a way for them to connect with one another as veterans, and for me to meet new people that are there joining the non-competitive environment, although the mayor failed to mention that I did beat him in two out of the three games.
I'm always the gentleman.
But it was a fun story, and a lot of people got to meet our new mayor-elect there as well. They are always looking for sponsors. They are run by sponsorships, $400 gets them lanes, food, and shoes, and a good time, a good two hours' worth of time. So if anyone's looking to sponsor that, I will always encourage that. I think it's a great thing for them. I attended the TABCCM. It's a long acronym for the Texas Association of Black City Council Members Quarterly Meeting in Beaumont, along with the mayor of Elgin and two council members from Elgin. We traveled down there, and the meeting, basically, one is to organize the fundraiser for scholarships, the annual golf tournament, which is hosted during the TML conference. So it's to talk about planning for that and previous scholarships that were given out. And then we had our, the president of TML joined us for a minute, along with an executive director who updated us on legislation, the legislation that passed or didn't pass. There were a lot of questions about the HB 2127 bills and other bills that are gonna be impacting local authorities. So lots of good discussion there. Looking forward to volunteering and helping out in that golf tournament. They do encourage councils to participate in that golf tournament. It does a lot for African-American youth in their higher education goals. And then I, too, visited the Bastrop Child Advocacy Center, as well as Bastrop Food Pantry, both invites to tour the facility, find out more about what those organizations offer. I was, I'm very familiar with Bastrop Food Pantry, have been since conception. There's a lot of good information going on at the Child Advocacy Center. I did not realize the amount of service they provide to the community in terms of training our personnel, our emergency personnel, in three different counties, on how to recognize child abuse, child trafficking, and provide aid for children in distress. So that was very, very informative, and I enjoyed visiting with the Food Pantry to learn about their upcoming plans for a new facility. So lots of good support groups that we have here in our community, and I definitely want to be part of making sure their needs are met, as well as the residents who use those important services. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayorpro Tim Kirkland.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I'd like to congratulate the city on the successful Big Bang event. In fact, CNN had a feature on their website where they highlighted photos from all over the nation on their favorite snapshots taken from various July 4 celebrations. And our own Angela Plunkett, councilperson Plunkett's wife, was featured in a photo on CNN's website representing Bastrop and referenced the Pet and Pal Parade and Bastrop, Texas in that, and that was a really neat thing. Second thing is, I'd like to invite everybody to Corvette Invasion this weekend at the Convention Center. It's free for the public, and if you own a Corvette and would like to show that in that show, there are still some slots available, and you can register to participate if you still wish to do that. That's it. Thank you.
Notice I saved the Corvette Invasion for you to announce?
Thank you.
The owner of a Corvette. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to use my time today to welcome a new business to downtown, and that's CAF Coffee Shop. I always forget names. I'm terrible with it, so I apologize. But it's right across the street from Gracie's on Pine Street, and the place where the, see, I'm forgetting the name of those sandwich place, Basecamp Deli was. Yeah. So, but, and welcome her back, because she was the owner of Macoco, that used to be where Storehouse is now. So if y'all remember that place, I expect good things. She's a very good operator, and again, welcome to town, and y'all go try them out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Now for the city manager's report. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. All of that, and next Tuesday is Sit with Sylvia. It's at Casa Chapala from 6:00 to 8:00, and they normally run longer than 8:00, so please feel free to join us. Thank you to Pastor Nava for helping me set that up. We had a really good kudos for staff, and I want to, sorry, Colin, I don't have the clicker. I want to read that out loud because I think it exemplifies exactly what it is we're trying to do with the city and a new customer service approach. The message says, "We had a meeting today with building inspector, well, his building official, James Dot Cowie, and the fire marshal, Andres Rosales, as well as two other inspectors, Juan Velazquez and James Loden, at the building being considered for renovations downtown for a new business to be in the downtown." Each one explained issues and concerns pertinent to the building, as well as how those issues could be addressed in a manner that we appreciated. They reviewed the building, asked us questions, and gave us recommendations regarding proposed changes to the building. In turn, they answered our questions as well. The process was professional, concise, and they even met us on site. These men exemplified the city's vision of partnership, collaboration, and customer service, not only for businesses, but to residents. So thank you very much. Super important that we continue to put that face forward. James is in the audience. Correct? James. James Cowie, the building official, helping lead that, lead that attitude down at Development Services. Speaking of which, sorry, didn't realize I had the clicker. July 28th, as we discussed before, planning and development staff will be going with me to Shertz. There is a training being held by the Dent Navarro Law Firm. We will close the department down on July 28th. So we are putting things out on social media, putting things out on the, putting things out in message that we will be closed for the day. We'll still take online permits. That week, we will not close at our normal Tuesday noon. We will close that Friday instead, so we're gonna keep hammering that away because we will be closed. There is a Planning Commission workshop this coming week. We are going to be talking about grid streets, and we're also gonna be talking about the industrial park replat down that the EDC is handling. We are doing an EDC replat because it's a little bit different than how the city has handled, because the EDC and the city are the people putting up the financial security. So it will feel, as we go through the planning process, that some steps are being skipped, and I want to make sure that they understand fully what's going on before we move to action at the end of the month in July. Grid streets, we're gonna talk through that. I expect more workshops. Parks and Recreation Month, this is July. I'm sure you've seen all of the social media posts and all of the super exciting things happening. This last week was the water battle with the fire department down in Bob Bryant. That was a super fun place to be. There was kids galore. We have music in the park coming up, July 13th. Jimmy already mentioned, Councilmember Crouch mentioned the community bike ride. There's some jazz concerts planned, so there's something going on on the calendar all month long for the month of July. If you see Terry Moore, give her a pat on the back. We continue discussions with Visit Bastrop regarding the contract amendment and the budget. We expect to have a joint meeting with the, hi. We expect to have a joint meeting with the Visit Bastrop Board and the City Council. That date is to be determined, but it's looking more like the August timeframe. We are running out of time before the council adopts a budget, so I am pressing that forward because you're gonna be in a position to need to adopt a tax rate very soon. Same thing, the mayor mentioned our meeting with partner organizations. We do have a meeting set for next week. It was set for this council meeting, but we have the Parks Master Plan and some other things, and there was some confusion as to funding and funding allocation. We met, had some very good discussions, cleared the air. So those presentations will be to you next week. We've asked for them early so that you can have them in your packet and have an opportunity to ask questions, as well as see the applications in your drop boxes. Balancing Act closes at the end of the month, so if you've not had an opportunity to input how you would like the general fund dollars allocated, please do so. Vicky's counting on you that she get two, Chief Stefanik, sorry, she's counting on you that she get two officers, and the fire department's counting that they get one additional. So, and Terry Moore's counting on you that you allocate some dollars to parks. We also have a joint EDC council meeting that is set for July 24th. We had a placeholder for July 17th. The chair will be out of town, so that meeting is now canceled, and we have set the July 24th date. We continue to work through incentive agreements that we're receiving, working with the Hyatt, working with Pearl River. We have several industrial park items that we will be working through, so each one of those will make their way onto your agenda sooner rather than later. I'm hoping we can get through most of these before we begin super in-depth budget discussion so you can see the budgetary impacts from a 50,000-foot perspective, and then also the granular level. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. And I want to encourage anyone who has not done so to go look at the Balancing Act. It gives you a good idea of the inner workings of what the city, the city responsibilities are, and it's really a good tool. Thank you for putting that out for us, City Manager. Moving on to work sessions and briefings, pretty excited to receive a presentation from Standic Consulting on proposed Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Ms. Moore, our manager of recreation.
Good evening. I'm super excited, super excited to be standing here with Mark Maldonado, with Standic Consulting. We've been working since January to pull this together. They've done an enormous amount of work. But I do want to highlight a couple of things to everyone here. This has started, it started in January with collecting data from our community. We've got 15 volunteers here in the city that have been working with us to help us get that word out. That's not something that just I could do, or just one person in the city could do. It took a lot of us to get that out there. So I do, if you'll indulge me here, I would like to recognize those people. Our Parks and Advisory Board, Carrie Fossler, Margaret Robinson, Jamie Creasy, Stephen Felbert, Mike Lucas, Gail Sheehan, and Rick Rivera have been very instrumental in helping us keep the things directed the way it needs to go and get the input from the community, as well as our steering committee, and those folks are Ethan Schindler, Carrie Fossler said on that as well, Gilbert Severantes, Perry Lowe, Christine Long, Samaya Lacombé, Wes Eves, and Ashton LaFunte. They, this could not have happened and been as thorough without their participation, so I really would like to recognize them and appreciate, let them know how much I appreciate them. So, y'all hear me talk all the time? The man with the plan does a whole lot better job at it, so I'm gonna hand it over to him.
Thank you, Terry. Mayor Nelson, council, Ms. Carrillo, thank you so much for this opportunity. Like Terry mentioned, it's a really exciting time. It's been a wonderful six, seven, going on eight-ish months, but seeing the journey progress and the excitement from the community has been really rewarding as working on this project. So if you haven't had the chance to do so, I do invite everybody to visit the project website to download a full version of the plan. It is very robust and very visionary, but also very strategic. That gives you the roadmap for successful implementation. Today's presentation is gonna be kind of an executive summary or highlights from the plan, and I'll be kind of going through that information pretty quickly. But I do welcome any questions that you may have at the end, where we can come back and visit any of the information in more detail if necessary. So first of all, if, some of you have already seen a little bit of this information, others is new, but where we are in the process, we're in step nine, step 10 of the overall process. We started kind of with the due diligence, the community profile, doing a analysis of your existing inventory of the Parks and Recreation System. We looked at, we did a community survey, interviewed different stakeholders, different user groups, came up with recommendations, presented those to the Parks Advisory Board. We came up with priorities and action items, the implementation strategies, funding strategies, and now we're kind of at the last hill end of presenting those again and kind of wrapping everything up before we present for adoption in the next couple of weeks. But one thing that I really wanted to stress and emphasize is, if this plan is one thing, it is a community-driven, community-inspired plan. And one thing that we were able to really boast pride on was the amount of enthusiasm and feedback that we got from participation from the community. You know, in total, we got nearly 1,000 different actions and engagements from different community members. And that could vary from the community survey, which was approximately 25 different questions. We had a mapit exercise where people could drop pins and ideas of, on a map of different parts of the city. We also had an idea wall, which was a virtual post-it wall, where people could really post their ideas, their thoughts on some of our recommendations, in addition to the Instagram, the Facebook, the social media platforms that the city provided as well. But all in all, we heard a lot of positive feedback, and that really did shape the recommendations. You know, so a lot of the things that you're gonna be seeing today shouldn't be necessarily surprises. It's kind of echoing what we heard from the community, mixed with, where do you stand? Where does Bastrop stand in regards to national standards, to peer cities? What are those gaps, and what are the community needs? And then what are the recommendations that can help fill some of those gaps? So in short, here are some highlights of what we heard from the community. Sports and athletics was a big gap in terms of meeting that program for the community. So a sports complex, a recreation center, something along those types of facilities were being desired by the community. Recreation center, indoor facilities that could provide some relief to the outdoor heat and provide some shade were also expressed. Coordination with different partnerships, you know, with the school, with the county, with the regional organizations to help, you know, provide some subsidies, or some just coordination, or even uses of facilities. Maintenance agreements were also mentioned. Trails and connectivity, mobility was another big issue, is one of the top three that was mentioned across the board. So in a lot of the plans, you see both at the micro scale and macro scale, we've tried to incorporate the connectivity, accessibility component into a lot of the recommendations. Programming in general, from youth all the way up to senior citizens, and giving them something to do, and some type of recreation activity programs was really mentioned. Aquatics, swimming pool. Aquatics, swimming pool, but also connecting people with the Colorado River, giving them that, that water connection was very, very much mentioned. Safety and maintenance was another reoccurring theme. So everything from more water fountains at parks to bathrooms that can be maintained, all the way to lighting and, and just visibility for, for improved safety. So those were a couple of the highlights that we heard. And again, as we mentioned, we, we took what the community said, we looked at national standards, peer cities, and then we also looked at the, the national demand and, and level of service, if you will, of nationally speaking, what should your park system look like? So in, I wanna, the, the master plan explains this in more detail, and we can come back to this in more detail if need be, but we don't put all our recommendations in one bucket with one lens only. You know, if nationally speaking, they say, well, y'all need 50 pickleball courts, but nobody mentions anything about pickleball, then why would we recommend that? So we, it's really kind of like a three-lens approach, right? We look at the demand base, where we look at what the community said and the feedback and the responses. We look at the national standards, standard-based assessment, where we look at national trends, peer cities, you know, your standards, et cetera. But then we also look at your resource base, looking at natural features, transportation networks, connectivity networks to say, how can we connect those dots? So throughout the process, we, we met with various stakeholders, user groups, community members. We, we did that community engagement survey. We did a number of meeting in a box where those meeting invites and questions were taken to smaller groups that are usually harder to reach and harder to include, and got some really good feedback. And through that, we were able to work with the Parks Advisory Board, city staff, and the community at large to really come up with a unique vision statement that would set the precedent of this successful Parks Master Plan. And the vision statement reads, envisioning the creation of a dynamic, all-inclusive parks, recreation, and trail system that will foster and support a deeper sense of community, promote the overall health, as well as embrace the unique and historic natural environment of the Colorado River and the Lost Pine Forest. So we wanted it to be something unique and local, and if there's one thing that this plan is, in addition to being community-embraced, it is, that is unique to Bastrop. We definitely did not do a copy and paste approach. We looked at Bastrop's community, their desires, their needs, but also their opportunities, you know, and taking challenges and constraints and turning them into opportunities. So without that, without further ado, I, we, we were able to come up with 10 solid goals that we really wanted out of this master plan. And I won't go into too much detail in these, but I, if you look at the, the bottom bars of each one of the goals, it tells you what they have to do with. So like, number one is level of service, number two is facilities, three, recreation, four, economic impacts, five, natural resources, visibility and branding, safety and maintenance, connectivity, funding, resources, and then regional connectivity. So that's a lot, and we expect this plan to do a lot. But just like public spaces, they should be able to do a lot, and they're really kind of what, what give the sense of pride of a community, what the community members really embrace and hold on to and say, this is our shared space, you know, our sacred, sacred space. So we wanted to be bold with the goals and objectives out of this plan. Through that, we were able to develop these solid recommendations. And the way that we've broken up the recommendations, we're into the Big Six, is what we're calling them. So I want you to imagine that if you were to ask, okay, Mark, where do we start and where could we really channel our efforts to, to make an impact? That would be these Big Six ideas. So these are the six categories or topics that we say, if you really invest time and effort into these categories, we're really gonna move the needle in the right direction. So number one of the Big Six is to develop sustainable and robust funding strategies to support the newly envisioned park system, including the development and improvement of their, of parks and their maintenance and operation requirements. So again, I'm not gonna go into all the different strategies that were included in the Big Six, but more of the highlights. I wanted to highlight, one of the things that you, you see here is our funding matrix. So unique to Bastrop, unique to Bastrop's demographics and our specific recommendations that were developed, our funding and grant writing team was able to identify over 36 grants that you guys are eligible for and that these projects that you're gonna see today are eligible for. You know, and we've made it as easy as possible by identifying what the grant is, if it requires a match, when the, when the grant is due, even provided the, the website and the contact in some instances. So this is definitely gonna be one of those tools that, that should be used for proper implementation, but as a good starting point to say, how are we gonna pay for this? Well, here's a good resource to start with. Identifying, you know, which of these grants are priorities, which ones are them low-hanging fruit, which ones are them a little bit more, you know, more aspirational to tackle, but nonetheless, they're all specific to you guys in these recommendations, so we should be off to a great start. Number two is improving the existing park trails and recreational facilities to support the newly envisioned park system. One thing that we heard that necessarily was not surprising was that the community really embraces their local parks and what's existing, but they want to see them more maintained. They want them to be cleaner, safer, but also have a little bit more programming. You know, so with that, we were able to really focus on, on some of the bigger parks and more notable parks to the community and provide some ideas. But one of the things that was very obvious was that the lack of signage continuity and just branding for the park system was something that was lacking. So that's where we want to start with, is just defining a cohesive signage branding, wayfinding system. But what you'll see here is some master plans that we've recommended as visionary ideas of what some of these parks could be. So starting with Bob Bryant, it's a newly envisioned park that connects people to nature and really highlights on that. Some of the highlights include an enchanted forest and treehouses, a new kayak launch, a dog park, community gardens with a new pavilion, you know, recreational activities for, for a diversity of demographics and age groups, a place for the community to come gather, but then also some flexible spaces where you can throw a frisbee or actually have some kind of structure to vent here. All of this said, you know, we also propose a improved disc golf course that, that a lot of people use currently, but really kind of highlighting the natural aspects of the Colorado River, the beautiful forest that, that's there along the banks, but then also some of the spaces that are currently being used by the community at large. In Fisherman's Park, we simplified the programming, but also introduced a variety of flexible uses. One of the highlights that you'll see here is, again, connecting people to water and providing this beachfront entry where people can, can come, enjoy, have a little bit of recreation in a different environment, but also that's something unique besides some of the other parks that are found in Bastrop. You know, you have a boat, boat and kayak launch, you have an improved boardwalk with overlooks, additional lighted trails that are ADA accessible, a festival lawn, and amphitheater. But promoting proper accessibility, ADA accessibility, connectivity was very important, and then the diversity of uses of Fisherman's Park where we can incorporate some of those educational components, some of those, those elements that, you know, schools, classrooms could, could come and partake as well in this great feature of this park. Mayfest was another park that we looked at, and you know, one of the things that we, that we realized was that at its current state, Mayfest is not really used to its full capacity. So in determining a higher and better use of the site, we proposed offering athletic and sport facilities. That was definitely a gap that was found in our analysis. So what we're proposing here is four new turf-lit soccer fields with expanding parking, a loop trail, a new all-inclusive playground, and then some additional, an additional overlook, sorry, now I'm going the wrong way, in that area. Pecan Park, another park offering, you know, peace and tranquility, really highlighting the flora and the fauna of Bastrop, but more importantly, giving people a kind of respite of, of connecting to nature, a, a, a natural lawn with wildflowers, but also a loop trail with the boardwalk and overlooks, and, and trail markers with areas for recreation and kind of a festival lawn with a diversity of, of different uses. And then lastly, you know, one of the thresholds coming in to, to the downtown, but Bridge Park, you know, a skyline urban park that really provides the pedestrian and small vehicular connectivity over the Colorado River where, where you can come in and see this urban park that welcomes you into downtown with a variety of, of shade canopy textures and, and pavement seating opportunities, but overlooks that give you this huge vista of the river and the city, but really a Instagrammable moment for the city to say, this is Bastrop. You know, and this is, this not only pays homage to our history, but also welcomes you to, to the future home. But definitely see that as an opportunity. Continuing on to number three of the Big Six is developing trail and trail connections to consider new design standards, safety concerns, and then improve overall connectivity. So with that, really what we're saying is we should, you should do a full-out trails master plan that's probably overlaid with the transportation or mobility master plan to see how the two can really connect, but providing a variety of different strategies to really help connect some of those dots. And we did have a great workshop where we brought in different user groups to really help identify what they want to be connected to, what should we be connected to, and as development rolls out, where should those trails be considered? So a very successful workshop that helped guide some of the recommendations that we came up with. Number four was to expand and create additional recreational programming, special events, and educational opportunities. As I mentioned previously, in some of the concepts that we created, we tried to incorporate some of these ideas. These festival lawns, these natural elements, these educational components that help not only the educational aspect of, of, you know, resources for younger generations to learn, older generations to be a part of, but also allow the different recreational programming to happen at various seasons. You know, if, if the weather's nice, full festival lawn outdoor, or, you know, enclosed pavilion, or if need be hot situation, then a potential athletic facility, recreation center, something along those lines. Number five, identify and acquire land for new parks, recreational facilities, trails, open space, preservation areas. So just to, to throw out a couple of numbers real quick, so right now, to raise the level of service from where we're at to get you to where we believe we need to be, we are lacking a total of about 73 acres in parkland, and that's with today's population. Now if, I'm sorry, that's a 2030 population. Now if we were looking at a 2040 population, Bastrop would need an additional 120 acres of parkland. So we wanted to, to include something that would really speak to land acquisition strategies and also like what resources are available for you guys to help meet those numbers over time, but more importantly, identify that need. So when we talk about development, when we talk about future, future build-out, when we talk about different people coming to town with, with opportunities, consider parkland. How can we weave those into the overall development, into the programs to really help the betterment of the quality of life for the community? And then lastly, it's the elephant in the room, but it's something that we heard definitely loud and clear, which was to develop an all-inclusive, multi-use recreational facility, community center to help the recreational needs of, of a community. So with that, you know, we definitely encourage you guys to, to do a feasibility, due diligence study to see exactly, you know, what square footage would be required, how much land would be required, what are the cost, operational costs as well, maintenance requirements, you know, for that one specific thing. But it's definitely something that the city is ready to, the community is ready to embrace and have definitely said it loud and clear that they're ready to see it happen. One of the things that was unique to, to this process for us was that there was an economic study for sport facilities that also was part of our scope of work, but helped guide some of the recommendations. And I'm not gonna go through the numbers in too much detail here, but one of the things that we looked at was if we were to provide tournaments and, and having some optimistic assumptions, what would that look like? And providing a four-field soccer complex would potentially attract 165,000 visitors. Addition to that, it would possibly inject over 11 million in visitor and tourism money. And then all in all, that, that would easily translate to the economic impact of over $5 million by providing that same soccer complex. So what we do is, we take a lot of this information and then we kind of mold it together and really kind of try to show that in our recommendations, which we have in, in this case, like in the example that we showed for Mayfest Park. Lastly, one thing that I hear often is, these are all great ideas, but how do we get there? How are we gonna pay for it? And, you know, it's a lot to tackle, and it's right. I mean, the one thing that we want to consider is that, one, you guys cannot do it alone. Number two is we want to build the advocates, the partnerships, those, those members that support the vision of what it could be, what the park system can be, and we've done that. We've, we've had great partners along the journey, and they're really excited. You know, we provided great graphics that get people excited, but also can attract additional people. But also, we've identified some partnerships that are strategic to say, you know, let's have conversations across the table with the county, with the school district, with other agencies that can really say, how can our part impact us regionally and work together to help bridge some of those gaps? So with that said, our implementation strategy has been simplified to the best of our ability by providing an implementation matrix. And we really intend this to be a living document that is, is visionary, but at the same time implementable. And what we've done is in this matrix, we've identified if it's a project, a program, or a policy. And we've identified some things that don't cost any money, that you guys can start on now. Once the plan is adopted, you can start with organizational structures, regulatory stuff. You know, there are some, some big projects in here that are gonna take some time and some coordination, and we've, we've acknowledged those, but we've also included them to say, well, start planning for them. You know, but I do encourage you guys to, to look at the implementation matrix in full detail and kind of go through those, because that is gonna be the roadmap to success, or at least part of the roadmap to be, to be successful. But in closing, this is a visionary document. You know, it's, it's shelf life is, according to Texas Parks and Wildlife, it's about 10 years, and it's supposed to be updated every five. That said, we realize that it can't be done just by one entity, one person, or one group. You know, so we embrace the community's feedback. It is a community-driven plan, and it's very aspirational, but exciting of what the park system could be. So with that, I'm going to play a video of what, what it could be and what the next step should be.
Welcome to Bastrop, a place where you can embrace yourself in the beauty of Texas nature and let your worries fade away. Imagine the rush of the Colorado River, the melodic sounds of singing birds, and the deep bellow of the Houston Toad. Picture yourself exploring the many hiking trails that'll free your mind and invigorate your spirit. And when you're ready to let loose, come enjoy a night out on the town, dancing and singing along to the tunes of true Texas musicians. After listening to your voices, there's a great vision for the future of our community, so let's come together to make it a reality. Our goal is to enhance the walkability of Bastrop by connecting the city through its current parks and hiking trails. We want to create more space for community members to gather and enjoy their favorite sports, cool off on a hot summer's day at a splash pad, and host community events like movie nights and festivals. We also want to restore historical sites like the Iron Bridge, transforming it into a new gathering space for residents and visitors alike. Our city is unique, and we want to embrace its individuality by connecting both new and older generations and looking to the future. It's our turn, city of Bastrop. Let's take action and create a better tomorrow, together.
So with that, I will open it up to any questions you guys may have.
We really appreciate the presentation. I'm hoping that we can get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation.
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate that. Council, we have any questions for Mr. Maldonado or for Ms. Moore? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, more statements, but the presentation was awesome. Like I was trying, I think I started reading it Thursday or Friday, and Saturday I barely put a dent in, and I was like... I was like, this is a lot of information, but very well done. Information is much needed. You know, I did some outside research about cities that have best park systems. Plano was one that came to mind and their, their ability to walk anywhere within 10 minutes and touch a park. And that made me dive in more into our data and what our walkability was like to parks. And I think that one of the, the things that I found most interesting was the demand or ask for upgrades to our existing park system. And I, I talked with Terry a lot about how we accomplished that. And it's probably more of a question for her, but I, I would like, be interested in knowing where, where does that start? Like what group will be responsible for implementing the plan? Because what I don't want to have happen, which happens a lot, not in, just in our city in particular, but in a lot of these big plans, even in corporations where you spend a lot of money creating these plans. And then a year comes around and you're looking at milestones and it's like, okay, it's five years now, we need to update the plan. Well, what do we do in the five years? So are parks going to be responsible for implementing the plan? Will we, as council, do workshops to establish priorities for parks? Are we going to have a designated person that's focused on getting the grants? So I'd kind of like to know the meat of that and this might not, that may come later, but that's where I'm at. Like all of this is great and I think it's all exciting and the concept drawings are awesome. I'm ready to actually do it. So where is our low hanging fruit that we want to start with? And is that something we'll set at a later date? And then who will be the responsible person of making sure we have strategies in place to start implementing?
So first, the council would have to do a workshop and set some priorities. That's the first thing, because that's going to inform who I need, how much I need, who is it? Right now, you have a quote unquote Parks Department, but you have a Parks Department that is interested in maintenance. You don't have a, you have a Recreation Manager who is or isn't, depending on the day and depending on the question, even related to the Parks Department. And often they're at odds because Parks is busy mowing and the Recreation Manager needs something set up. So that's, that's like a current issue. But if you prioritize and you tell me, we're going to be working toward X, then that'll inform, okay, I'm going to need Y staff to make that equation happen. In terms of priority, the bridge is coming to you in the, in the budget. A bridge repair, I don't believe it's to the extent of what is in this item, because I know for a fact, we haven't priced this item because it hasn't been on the radar. So is what we have programmed in the budget enough? That's, you know, question number two. And then in terms of grants and those kinds of things, we third-party that, that most of our, our grants go to one of two or three firms that we use. So no, there isn't anybody on staff. Staff manages the grants once they're awarded. That's in Waldron's group. They file the necessary reports, et cetera, et cetera. So.
So one of the things that, when I read through it was looking at how much money we currently have budgeted for parks. And then what the national standard says we should have, certainly have by 2030. So what I, what I was thinking when I was reading through this, okay, a lot of, a lot of people said they want upgrades to the existing parks. So how much of what we currently have for parks can we use to start prioritizing that? To me, that means existing parks like Jewel Hodges, the smaller parks, the Ferry Park, fixing those upgrades with the money we have now. I look at the bridge and Mayfest and lots, a lot of fishermen's. I mean, fishermen's is there, but what's on the concept is beyond what's there. To me, those are like capital improvement type things that are going to take a longer time and more funding. Can we look at and consideration, council, when we have this discussion for the future? And I asked Terry if we could break down what that 1.2 million is that's in the budget now, how much of that is for operations, maintenance, just like mowing the grass type of thing versus, and then what, what's our money left to maybe start some of these smaller upgrade projects while we're looking for funding for the bigger projects?
Zero. Zero.
So all of that?
And I'm, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I wasn't the city manager who prepared the budget that you're operating in. So full disclosure.
So the 1.2 now is all?
It's all completely maintenance and operations because you do not have a park and recreation program. You have a parks maintenance program and as evidenced by the information, just barely. I mean, they're mowing, they're trimming, they will repair some things that are dangerous, but we don't have any monies set aside, for example, to go put a cover over one of the playgrounds without it being budgeted. Minimal. I mean, they've budgeted enough to just do immediate repairs that need to be done, but for me to tell you, oh, every year we put in half a million dollars to go build a piece of playground equipment? Zero.
Well, then I'm looking forward to our workshop because I.
Yes, ma'am. So if you'll recall, you had some hires in the budget. You were trying to hire more managers. And I said, I don't need more managers, I need more Indians. And so that's how Terry was able to get a temp that she'd been having forever and we were working to death now as a full-time person. There's still only two people. There's not been, there's not been a program, there's not been the attention paid to a recreation area, nor a parks area. The honesty is if I, Curtis and company, he's doing streets, water, wastewater, and parks. And mowing when he can, and in the dry spells, when the grass isn't growing, they're focusing on other areas. And they're only paying their attention to parks. I mean, she's got a scheduled time on when they can set up and tear down. We're borrowing from convention center staff, Main Street staff, public work staff to try to even pull it together. So my answer continues to be zero.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's what I was wanting to know. And thank you, city manager. And again, great presentation, lots of great opportunities. I look, very much am looking forward to workshops to start putting this in place. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Lee, that's why we get paid the big bucks. Over the next few years, we'll, we'll be looking at priorities, looking at budgetary concerns and working to certainly securing grants and other outside funding sources. And we'll be able to make hopefully sound decisions as we move forward to, to move along some of these implementation ideas. Councilmember Crouch.
Yeah. It was a great presentation and I, I came in by accident and sat in one of the groups. So I, I cheated and got a quick preview. So apologize for that, but it was good so I could see some of the stuff that y'all have been doing. So I compared to the 2008 Parks Master Plan to 2015 Master Plan. And there's some repetitive stuff, but it's just because, it just shows that since 2008, we haven't been doing what, what we've been told that we need to do. A recreation center is one thing, something as simple as shade structure. For me, when my grandkids come to town, the first thing they say is, why do we plan on this metal preg down equipment in the sun when it's 105? And low hanging fruit, right? So if we can get some funding for those simple things, I mean, that's, a shade structure should be a real simple thing, but we don't have the money for that. So I think we should look at prioritizing, getting the low hanging fruit, maybe some business sponsors. I'm not sure how we can do that, but if we can't pay for it with our tax revenue, with grants that we're going to apply for, and that's one reason we have a Parks Master Plan, so that we can apply for grants. Because that's always one of the requirements. What is your, what does your master plan say? If we can get some corporate sponsors for some of this stuff, that, that could help us, help us pay for some of it. And maybe the simple things, maybe you have a Buc-E's shade structure. And we have a, you know, we have a shade structure and it's got a beaver head on it, but at least it's a shade, it's a shade structure. So I just, ideas.
Councilmember, you laugh, but that, that's a common practice. I mean, I will tell you, back home in Corpus Christi, we partnered with the university. The university sponsored most of the improvements along that Bayfront Seawall. We had Whataburger Field, we had many, many corporate sponsors and, you know, the Beaver's not poor. I'm just saying. Right across the ponds in San Patricio and Aransas County, when industry came into the La Quinta Channel, they partnered with neighborhoods. I mean, there's parks in some of the poorer areas that are funded by Cheniere, Volstapine, all of the industry paid for pocket parks. Some of that is what is in our policy discussions, what can and should development pay for.
Yeah. And, and I think we need to look at that. That, that needs to be a serious discussion because there's, we have so many citizens and they would be happy to help financially and whether it's putting their name on a piece of equipment or something like that, then we should, we should consider that. I like the fact that the connectivity to all the parks. I know this weekend, there's a bike ride that goes to a majority of the parks or some of the parks. Just for the people, I looked at the list of parks and I bet if we, I put it on Facebook and I know you've got it on Facebook too, Terry, but a lot of people don't even know all the names of the parks here in town. And so I think that, that bike ride, if you can come just to go see the parks that we've got, is going to be a big, just, just for people can, to get out and see that. The sports and athletics in the 2008 and the 2015 Master Plans, it said you need more playing fields. We still need more playing fields. I don't think we've added any since the 2008, even in that Master Plan. We have the same Little League fields, we have the same, maybe not even the same ones that's across from Buc-E's where the soccer fields are on the school property. That's really school property. We should have playing fields. With that, you saw the economic impact for that. We could generate hotel stays, we could generate weekend stays here if we had that type of playing field complex, whether it's a baseball, football, soccer. I, I think back when my kids were smaller and, and we migrated to Georgetown and Round Rock for all the state tournaments because they had fields available. And we, we can't do that here because we don't have a quality complex where everybody's going to want to come here to do that. We, we just, there's some things that we need to think about and we need to prioritize and we need to have funding for it. So the grant writing's a big thing. I think corporate sponsorship's a big thing. Thank you for pointing all, all of these things out for us again. I mean, it's the first time for you, but we have seen, seen a lot of the stuff before and we just need to, and you also said maintenance. I, I wrote that down too. So we need to, we need to continue to maintain what we've got as well. And that's a big thing. I know the city manager just said that that's one of the things our staff does is just fix the broken stuff that we've got. So it's going to come down to funding, it's going to come down to a priority list. And Mr. Washington's here, he's had a great plan for a recreation center. We've seen plans for that. We just need to implement it. We need to prioritize it, we need to implement it, and we need to get some funding for it. So thank you very much for pointing it out again. Excellent presentation and Terry and Carrie, everybody that helped that you recognized earlier, great job. Because 1,000 responses, I know that was kind of the goal and to actually, I, I didn't think you'd get but a couple of hundred. And yeah, 1,000 people in a town of 10,000 people, that's awesome. That was really good. So good, good getting people out. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One of the key recommendations comes to develop robust and sustainable funding strategies and the 36 grant opportunities. So you're absolutely right, we can, we can probably find some, some, some more money, but we're going to have to take this on as council and provide those priorities to our city staff so we can move forward on that. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes. So we're speaking my language because I've been in recreation all of my life, that's where my heart is. And a community is only as healthy as its sickest citizen. And that, that's body, mind, and spirit. You know, so we're just not talking physical activity. This is about community and coming together for the wellness of our city. So I so appreciate your presentation. The one thing I really want to shout out, because I'm down at the parks all the time, is to Curtis and staff, because with what they have and what they have to operate, they're doing a great job. I know we can do more, but I just want to say thank you so much to Curtis and staff for that. One thing that I am concerned about, and I spoke to Terry about this, was ADA accessibility because that's kind of a priority. We can have great parks and great everything, but if, if they're not accessible to sometimes our sickest citizens, then we're not doing our job. So that would be one of my priorities is to kind of do the assessment and see where we need to put in the money there. And then on, this is on visionary, at Mayfest Park, and I know everybody knows what I'm going to say about sports complex, because I think it's wonderful and it will generate a lot. But I do also consider rodeo being part of sport. So I don't think it's all or nothing. I think we could really incorporate and make that part of that vision too, so we can make it even bigger and better for, for everyone. But thank you so much for your presentation.
My pleasure. And just to, to provide a little bit of feedback, so one thing that you will find in the, in the full document is some general recommendations. And those, I want y'all to think as just like, if we were going to have a new mindset, you know, where we didn't need to mention that on every single park, you know, this just needs to be implemented across the board. And what I mean by that is fully accessible, ADA accessible, more shade, more trees, you know, pay attention to safety, safety concerns, and just a safety and safer environment. So those, we have a general recommendation section that addresses those items that without mention should just be implemented from the very get-go. And then lastly, the caveat was, you know, at the end of the day, these are recommendations. Really, it's up to you guys to say, what are we going to implement and where, where do we want to take this to what level? You know, so with Mayfest specifically, we saw that as an opportunity with a better, highest, and best use for year-round activity and potential revenue streams identifying a gap. That said, it's not the only solution. I mean, that could easily be incorporated to a recreation center to make it a athletic slash recreation center, you know, that's all kind of housed in one area. But likewise, I, I would encourage you guys to, to maybe look at Mayfest as an independent project to do a master plan and see how we can program it, maybe with different land uses or, or different programming types to, to still help fill those gaps, but then see how the opportunities could be to increase or present in a better way. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to comment on the brief interchange about the shade provided by the Beaver. You know, the, the master plan actually addresses this question. Page 245, there's a question about corporate advertising and naming rights. And 10.3% of the people that filled out the survey do not support that, which then leaves you a pretty big number on the other side of that. So I think that is something that, that we could absolutely look at. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? I guess next steps is unless y'all see some substantive changes that need to come about in that, I guess our next request or next ask is to bring us back something to adopt? Close to it?
No, sir.
Tell me.
We need to come back with a workshop so that you guys can begin to prioritize.
Did I leave workshop out? I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Appreciate your long commute.
Our pleasure.
Mr. Maldonado came all the way from Italy to provide us this presentation, so.
I just came back from vacation, but.
Well, we just thought we were that important. We really appreciate it. Ms. Moore, we really appreciate your dedication, your expertise on this. I mean, we really do. And we know it's a, it's a hard road to travel, but you're doing it quite well, so thank you. With help, with help. We acknowledge that. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Moving right on along, we'll receive a presentation on our credit card fee policy brought to us by our CFO, Ms. Waldron.
It's already up there for you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a circle back around item. I know we talked about this at our April 19th workshop, and so I just wanted to go over this quickly. There are some new members. There are some new members on the dais. So, the city does not currently have a policy for credit card fees. The current practice is that we absorb all of those fees. We presented some facts, which I will go over in summary on the April 19th workshop. And the consensus that we got back was that there are some fees that we still would like to absorb, they're small fees. But there are some fees, specifically development and utilities, that if, if the customer is paying by choice with a credit card, that we would be passing those fees on to them. And that's what the policy is all about. Just to recap, this was the total fiscal 22 fees by activity. And so you can see library, recreation, convention center, and the two largest ones, development services and utility customer service. So, almost $93,000 in fees that the city absorbed, 68,000 of that being in the utilities department.
Councilmember Lee, that's a staff member. That, that amount of money could fund a recreation staff member.
I will say that does get paid for by the water, wastewater, and electric funds, but yeah. Utilities is the largest expense, so just kind of highlighting the fact that we do offer a lot of options that are free. Mail-in check, we, we like to push towards either the automated, the auto-pay IVR. We do have a portal and the portal does offer ACH, which is at a much lower fee. It's a 29 cents per transaction, not, not a percentage on the, on the amount. And then also, the credit cards run anywhere from 0.69% to 3.15%, depending on what kind of card they're using. So, the, the policy is, is a very simple policy. It really just states when it would apply, when it would, what are, what is exempt. In the policy, I have put that library and recreation fees would be exempt, we would still absorb those fees, those fees are small. But for the utility and development services, if the customer chooses to pay with a credit card, the policy is giving us up to 3%. I don't want to have to bring the policy back every time we get a new third-party company and they may not be exactly at 2.5%. So, that's why I did the not to exceed 3%. But right now, the two largest companies we're working for are negotiating closer to the 2.5%. I have put on the master agenda to bring the policy back on, in August, so any feedback would be lovely.
Council, any questions or comments for Ms. Waldron? Councilmember Crouch?
I, I know that when we talked about this in April, we were really shocked at the dollar amount of the fees that the city absorbs. And I know one of the things that we're supposed to do is to look at places where we can save money. And to have a $90,000 bill that, that the city is absorbing just because the citizens have an opportunity to pay with a credit card or pay with a check or come and pay with cash, that, that's, that's a big fee that we, we really don't, we don't really need. So, I think that's an opportunity where we can have some savings and that's why we're having this discussion. So, I, I think that if everyone was aware, I don't, I wasn't aware that we were paying that kind of a dollar amount of fees. I think if everyone knew that what we were doing, that they'd go, I'll choose to pay my own $3 or not to, and then come up with a different way to pay. There's, there's, you showed in our meeting then and that there's a, a way to pay where you don't have a fee at all. And it's, and it's free through the bank, free, write a check, come do it, but there's a free way to do it. And that, that $100,000 or $90,000 can go to a shade structure and, or something else. So, just, we need to think of it from an economical standpoint where we can save the city some money. And this is a great, one, one great place to do that. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Couple of questions for you. It has to do with the service charge in the proposed ordinance. It treats a payment by credit card not being honored as the same as a, like a bounced check. And I, I have a concern, I'll list the concern first, just so you know where I'm going with it then, and then a question. So, things like, I had some fraud on my credit card, so they, they sent me a new one and, and I'm certain I haven't switched all my streaming services to the new credit card. So, in 60 days, it's probably going to stop allowing them to bill me automatically. And, you know, some event like that, which isn't due to any kind of real negligence, someone might get billed, you know, I don't know, $29 or whatever the fee is for a, a check that bounces. And it's relatively common for debit cards, credit cards to need to be swapped out because of replacement things, especially in the fraud world that we live in. And so, my question is, you know, is there any other path? Like, for instance, is there any cost to us other than staff time for that particular action where you bill something and it doesn't go through?
I don't believe we get a fee for that, no.
Okay. You know, certainly, you know, the person hasn't paid their bill, you start a, a new process that you would have started anyway, to notify and, you know, whatever that comes next. But, but I guess I'm not in favor of the service charge because it's such a common thing in our world to need to change those out.
Well, I think first of all, staff would work with the customer. I don't think it's a no suit for you, one size fits all. We understand those things happen. And if we don't have that level of compassion, we probably need different staff. But I'm very sure Ms. Waldron and her staff have the level of compassion when something happens in error. Now, if you change your credit card every three months, eh, it's probably a difficult conversation.
That section was right out of the code as well. So, whether, if, if it's in the policy, it doesn't necessarily mean, it gives us the ability to do that. It doesn't mean that we have to charge the fee depending on the circumstances. But if it's not in the policy, then it's not built in for us to have that ability to do that. But it is part of that section of the local government code.
So, as written, it doesn't seem to give that discretion. It says shall collect, so we can put may collect? And then I would buy that answer. Thank you.
That's it? Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So, to Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, I, I think I wrote down the same concern. It may be intertwined because one of the things with, so first of all, I want to make sure that everyone understands the credit card, when we say credit card, we're also talking about debit cards, right? Because I think people see credit card and think, oh, I don't have a credit card, I'm using my bank card. Well, it's the same thing, right? So, I wanted to kind of make that clear for the people in the back. So, your credit card payment is the same thing as a debit card payment, this fee applies. So, one of the things that I wanted to, a couple of things I wanted to ask about, credit, debit card payments are preferred because the payment goes through automatically versus an ACH. There's typically a delay in payment posting, two, three days. Do we, is that true? Do we find that when, when we, when people pay with an ACH, it doesn't go through automatically? Typically, ACH payments take two to three days to post.
A delay on your side or delay on ours? Because your post, your payment will post automatically.
On, with an ACH.
To your account.
With an ACH. To your, to our, to their balance, whatever the balance is. So, we pay through an ACH.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. What method you use, your payment would be posted.
It will show that you made a payment. Now, if there's insufficient funds in that person's account.
It's considered a return.
It, how, and how are they notified? How is the customer?
We get a return back and then we contact the customer.
Contact the customer via email?
We usually call them.
You call them, we call them. Okay. So, that was one of the concerns that I had was, one, how fast does an ACH post versus a debit card? And according to what you're saying, they're one in the same. They automatically get a call back letting them know that it didn't post. And, and then a late payment, late payment fee is assessed at, at that time. Okay, great.
It's a return, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's what I was wanting to make sure of because if an ACH, I was thinking if an ACH takes longer, are they going to get charged a late payment fee because they are now doing an ACH on the same day versus using a debit?
Their payment is posted automatically. Even if it takes a couple of days for our bank to get it, it's still reflected on their account that they paid that day.
On that, on, by the due date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Lee and Kirkland on the, the return fee on the expired cards or, or, you know, changed cards, that happens quite often. And yeah, there's, I think of all the ones that I have on auto-pay, I can't imagine how I would ever, you know? So, yeah, anything we can do to reduce that, especially if, if there's not a direct charge to the, to the city for that. And also, as somebody who pays a lot of these fees, it is a real thing, it is a real cost. And I think it's very legitimate that we, that we go after it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. No other questions, so we just, we will, I don't make sure I don't say workshop if I don't need to. The bring back out of our consideration. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Always thorough. We will now move to citizen comments. Madam Deputy City Secretary, I have two comments. Do we have any more?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Our first citizen to comment is Ms. Debbie Moore. If you will come to the podium, state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Debbie Moore, 1306 Church Street. I came here tonight to congratulate the visitor's center on the progression and the increase in traffic on our first Friday events. It puts me in mind of when the DBA was doing our five or six events and bringing 35,000 to 50,000 people down. It's good to see people back on Main Street, having fun, unique vendors coming there. And also, it's exciting to hear about how much fun people had at the Pet and Pound Parade. It's my very favorite thing in the, in the universe, I think. And our fireworks display is great. Congratulations to the city on that. And anybody that lives in the downtown area can attest that these events bring people and they also bring cars. And it's difficult at times to get out of the street. I'm not complaining because that means there are people are here. But it puts me in mind of possibly a time for us to pull out those old plans that we had when we repaved the back parking lot behind 602. At that time, we put enough rebar and strengthened the base to be able to construct a two-story, three-story parking garage. It's already there, it's been laid. Other mayors and councils thought it was wise to do that. And with the increase in traffic downtown and in cars, and I'm talking to some of the downtown business owners, they're concerned about parking also. And it was, it was fun trying to find a parking place on Friday night, but it was, it was okay because it was, lots of folks were there. So, I hope you might take a look at that. Like I say, DBA used to bring 30,000 to 50,000 people and with increased activity, I think we're going to see a lot more people downtown. And please don't forget when you're, when you're out trying to bring in the big box stores, the downtown Main Street folks are what makes Bastrop unique. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. The next one scheduled to speak is Mr. Gary Moss. Mr. Moss, if you'll approach and give your name, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Gary Moss, Gary Pickleball Moss, 1706 Wilson Street. Very upset that I didn't hear a bunch more about pickleball and the recreation thing. You didn't even mention pickleball when you're saying baseball and everything else in the world there. I'm very upset, very upset. It's a good thing I'm a good-natured guy. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. What I'm here to talk about is the last meeting that I attended here in the council. A little disturbing for me, to be perfectly honest with you. I saw it as not the best that Bastrop has to offer. The personal attacks on people wasn't very lovely to watch and see. And I, and I'm talking more to the people out there, Joe Q public, that they need to understand that all of y'all are volunteers, basically. You're not making big bucks up here to do this job. You're giving your time and your energy. And I think people need to be more gracious and considerate over the fact of what y'all are doing. You're giving your time and a lot of your time to do this. And they need to be just a little bit more careful about what they say, how they say it, and give y'all a little bit more support. That's my feeling about it. Done.
Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on council want an item removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 11F.
Anyone else know, is anybody in the audience wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Deputy City Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda exclusive of item 11F.
The consent reads as follows. Oh, item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the June 27, 2023 regular meeting. Item 11B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-20 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the fiscal year 2024 annual service plan update, including provisions related to assessments for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving a fiscal year 2024 assessment role for the district and containing other provisions related to the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District and the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation and providing for an effective date. Item 11C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-19 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending chapter one of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, chapter two, article 1.04, section 1.04.002, providing for automatic resignations of members of certain boards, committees, and commissions who run for city council and providing for finding of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 11D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-16 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending chapter 14 of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, the B3 code, chapter two, article 2.4, section 2.4.007, providing for a supermajority vote of council to approve a zoning change for which unanimous P and Z recommend a denial and provide for finding of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 11E, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-17 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending chapter 14 of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, the B3 code, chapter two, article 2.4, section 2.4.002, providing for recommendation from the planning and zoning to, to the city council and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Deputy City Secretary. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland and a second by Councilmember Lee. Madam Deputy City Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
We'll move right into item 11F, consider action to approve on second reading ordinance number 2023-18 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending chapter 14 of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, the B3 code, chapter two, article 2.4, section 2.4.002, providing for qualification for P and Z members and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Council- Councilmember Lee, it has to be pulled.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, and I asked it to be so that my vote could be consistent with how I voted, um, at the previous meeting. Um, standing by what I stated, I feel like the, the board, the mayor prior to you, and I have every confident that you will ensure that those that serve on planning and zoning will be representative of different sectors in our community, um, and different areas in our community. I don't feel like this qualification, specific qualifications are necessary, and I do feel like that, um, it puts us at risk of conflict of interest because, um, again, as I stated, some of those titles will be having, uh, active development here in the community. Um, we may find ourselves in situations where they will have to recuse themselves. Um, and again, we're asking for a volun, this is a volunteer role that these, that these individuals will be taking on. And I think that we have citizens in this community that are concerned enough about this community to be able to read a packet and receive information from the professionals hired to present that information to them to make informed decisions. So, um, I wanted to again make sure my vote was consistent with the vote from our previous meeting, and that is why I pulled the item.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I, my, my stance on volunteerism within the community is, is hopefully well-known. If not, I will gladly provide that to anybody that asks. And I, I will, uh, work very diligently to maintain diversification within our boards and commissions. Uh, Councilmember Plunkett, your light is on. Do you have something you want to add?
My apologies.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Okay, I, um, I'm open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Madam Deputy City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Thank you, council. Uh, motion passes four to one. We will now move into, uh, items for individual consideration. Uh, item 12A, consideration of action to approve resolution number R2023 dash nine-one of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the closure of Chestnut Street for the Bastrop Homecoming Parade, providing for repealing clause and providing for an effective date. Ms. Moore, do you have any presentation you want to make on this item?
I just want to say please.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Moore?
Please?
Yes, I do.
I have, I have, I have, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
I apologize for being outside.
You're good.
So, uh, the, the costs for these, as I recall, is, uh, ten thousand dollars each time we do that, is that correct?
So, when we apply for the, um, the permit, the permit does not cost us ten thousand dollars. What costs us is the barricades and the police officers.
Right. And, uh, and so we allocated, uh, a budget amendment so that these would be covered and, and could be paid for without impacting the organizations who thought they were having parades this year. And I stand behind that, and I'm going to motion to approve this, too.
Oh, good. Thank you.
But, um, my, my question has to do with kind of next year and alternate parade routes. Um, because, uh, at some point, we have to have a conversation about, you know, who pays the ten thousand dollars next year when someone wants to cross Chestnut and, uh, just figure out how that goes, you know. So, where are we on, say, new parade routes and, uh, providing alternatives to the traditional one?
So, we've, um, we've talked about a couple of things. Uh, one, alternative routes that would run, um, essentially parallel to Chestnut, something like that. That's just not the popular route. Um, and then the second is buying that signage and those barricades, um, internally and having that internally. We rent those right now from a third party. And, um, depending on the number and how many times we get asked, that's the same thing. Um, the third thing is they don't always have to be manned by police officers. Um, Corvet Invasion is a specific example, and then the legislature has helped us with some changes. It may be that they only need one officer instead of three, um, or some ratio of the sort. So, trying to bring that cost down in a variety of ways.
Yeah, I mean, bringing the cost down would help, but I just, we, we can't do ten thousand for every, you know, every event. That's somewhat punitive.
We are being proactive there. We do have a, a meeting scheduled in three weeks to talk about some options of small, medium, and large. And so, we have those races are the same way, the five Ks are the same way.
Right. Okay. That was it. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Well, hold on. We have another question or comment from, nope. Well?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. I have a motion for Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland and a second, Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Deputy City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Item 12B, and I will take a couple of breaths reading this. Uh, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023 dash 21 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a natural gas franchise agreement to Universal Natural Gas LLC, DBA Universal Natural Gas Incorporated, its successor, and assigns for a period of ten years from the effective date of the ordinance, a non-exclusive franchise and right to enter the public, public ways of the city of Bastrop, Texas, for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to customers in the public generally in the city, defining the words and phrases therein, providing assignment, sale, and lease of the franchise, providing for use and repair of the public ways, providing for regulation of service, establishing depth of pipelines, providing for indemnification of the city of Bastrop, providing for the inspection of the grantee's records, requiring grantee to pay a franchise fee, providing for conditions of the franchise, providing for the construction of this ordinance upon the invalidity of any part thereof, providing for acceptance of this franchise by grantee, and both an effective and operative date thereof, repeating all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for publication and move to include on the July twenty-fifth, 2023 agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. Um, yeah, so, uh, Universal Natural Gas approached the city about a franchise agreement. As you can see, um, the attorney wrote this. They wrote the title and they wrote the ordinance. Um, our attorneys and their attorneys have been working probably for about six months or so, going back and forth on this agreement. Um, Selena Loeb with that company, uh, representing, uh, Universal Natural Gas is here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this agreement.
Counsel, do we have any questions from Ms. Waldron or the gas representative?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Okay, so, I think my first question is somewhat broad, and it's kind of the, why is this coming before us?
Because the company has asked for a franchise agreement.
Okay, well, so are there any maps of the area that the company wishes to serve? Is that something that she can address?
Yes.
We do have maps.
Come to the.
Please come to the podium.
Sorry, excuse me. We do have, um, GIS or maps available of the developments we're looking to serve. I do not have that on me right now, but I can provide that to you all tomorrow morning. Um, but we have a couple contracts under, or a couple projects under contract, and we have one in, within the city limits that is pending this franchise agreement in order for us to close.
So, um, I guess I'll say that at least myself and I think this council places a high importance on our infrastructure, including our roads. And so, if you came in intending to serve downtown and dig up every single road in town to put gas lines in, you might be inclined to not vote for this. So, but it sounds like that's not your plan. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, our company typically, uh, builds infrastructure with greenfield developments, which are future developments that have not been developed yet. So, um, typically outskirts areas or, um, borderlining areas within the city. Uh, but in the event that we are excavating or, um, tearing up any streets, we do repair them up to city requirements and at our cost.
Well, uh, I was mostly concerned with trying to serve the whole city and what that impact would look like, but that's not the case, and that wasn't clear from the information presented, so that was my biggest concern. Um, and that satisfies it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, well, yeah, a lot of mine were along those same lines, I think. So, this is a non-exclusive contract, and you're not going to be going in and providing the same. Um, you know, we're not putting two gas lines in because obviously there's already somebody doing gas in the existing cities, so.
So, that, the, the purpose for a franchise agreement for the council and the folks watching is the right-of-way belongs to the residents. Any company that wants to be in that right-of-way should pay a fee, and that fee is then passed on either through a reduction of something else to the residents. It's the company's rent of that right-of-way. It is non-exclusive, so if there's another company that wants to go in, so long as there's room in the right-of-way, they'll be allowed to go in.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, it's no cost to the city at this point in time?
Correct.
At all, and we've received five percent, if I understand, five percent of the gross revenues of any things passing. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to give it to the ladies first.
Second.
You got that one on your own. All right, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Deputy City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 12C, uh, holding a public hearing, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023 dash 22 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, chapter fourteen, the Bastrop Building Block, B3 Code, article 3.1, place type zoning districts, and adding article 3.4, planned development districts, establishing standards and procedures, providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the July twenty-fifth, 2023 agenda for second reading. Madam City Manager?
Lawyers wrote that one, too. Just kidding. Um, this is the long way to introduce PDD, which I'm sure we're all tired of hearing by now, but I'll just give you again a brief introduction. A planned development district is a tool that's been in the development toolbox for several decades now. It was in our prior code as well. When we wrote the B3 code, it was removed. It was left as a reference but removed. Staff attempted to write a, um, similar ordinance in a category that they called employment center, and that was specifically applicable to the industrial park to give some flexibility. But much like spot zoning, you can't just pick, okay, I want an, uh, an, an employment center right there. So, a PDD gives, uh, the ability for some flexibility. The base zoning district has to match. In other words, you can't just decide you're going to build something way out of the ordinary, more intense than what the current zoning is. You'd have to go through a rezoning. What a PDD overlay does, in our case, it's a district, not necessarily an overlay, it allows the staff to be flexible and work through those segments of the code that don't necessarily work for that particular development scheme. And it allows it to work without the ability of twenty-seven variances or warrants, um, that we're calling right now. It also gives, um, the planning commission, the residents, and the council an opportunity to see it at a fifty-thousand-foot level from a conceptual component. And then staff goes through and works through the details. If everybody agrees that we do like the way this development is going to work, and functionally it works, then we begin to move forward through the process and then ultimately bring what is a change of zoning, uh, in front of the council and in front of the planning commission. So, it gets noticed in the paper, there's a sign put on the property, everybody gets an opportunity at two different hearings, three if it's tabled and they want more information. And both legislative bodies also get an opportunity to ask questions and maybe even tweak some things that maybe they don't agree with or isn't necessarily, um, in line with what the council and the, um, the residents would like to see. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any technical questions from the city manager before we open up for public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, in the section on the master plan, three, four, zero, zero, six, there is a subsection H that says lapse of master plan. A PD master plan shall be effective for a period of one year, three hundred and sixty-five calendar days. And, um, there's part of this that I feel like you're almost talking to me because I've asked you for every development that we talk about, is there some way that we can, um, have it canceled or expire so that we can get some action, so that developers were actually, agree to something and then execute on it, right? So, on one hand, I feel like this is speaking to me. However, I also feel like one year might be too short. Um, because while it does say that they can set an additional timeframe based upon, uh, ordinance, which means they just submit a plan that has a different date in it, in effect, but, uh, you know, the things that have multiple phases, the things that, um, you know, they fully anticipated it would be done in a year, but something happened, they got started four months late, and now they won't. And, um, there is the possibility of two extensions that can be explicitly granted by city council, but I, just imagining the mess of something that's sixty percent done and then council doesn't approve the extension and what that, you know, looks like, um, and even the possibility of politics causing that. And so, uh, I'm just wondering, is, is there a, a slightly better way?
So, um, in both items that you've described, so long as they're making substantial progress, that's, that's the first thing. And I don't know if that's clearly.
It doesn't say that, so.
Okay, so we need to, we need to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, if they've broken ground, they're making progress, then keep going.
Yes. Um, the second part of that is, in the situation that you described, they would be vested. There's a different chapter, um, in the code that allows them to be vested for periods of time. Uh, so, we wouldn't exactly pull the rug out from under them. We have a project right now, um, that is in the county that we have, uh, reviewed. It's been sort of in limbo for the last eighteen months, fell off everybody's radar. Uh, the county asked a, a development review committee maybe two weeks ago, hey, what happened to that? And staff said, I don't know, let's see. Well, we're, we've decided we're going to call the bond. We're going to, you know, send the letter that says you haven't done it, and it's, it's time. We're going to pull the bond and we're going to do it ourselves because you're right, we will be left with, um, in this particular case, they put up fiscal, so the plat is recorded. I mean, theoretically, they could go get a building permit. I think three hundred and sixty-five days is ample. What I have found is that, um, if anything, the developer's going to say, man, I thought this was going to work, my numbers work preliminarily, my numbers work, but man, I can't make the drainage work, or I can't make X, Y, Z work. And we will be tweaking within that time period.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think there's plenty of safeguards, um, but if you do want to add substantial progress, I wouldn't be opposed to that amendment.
I mean, I don't see safeguards in this text, and that's the thing I'm concerned about. Now, maybe there's.
Alan, should we reference 245?
I think 245, we already have an ordinance on the books in our Code of Ordinances that re, that references the vested rights statute, Local Government Code, chapter 245. Uh, but it'd be easy for us to insert before your, your second reading, uh, language regarding substantial progress or that sort of thing.
So, I'm not making a motion, by the way. So, the motion should say substantial progress or that sort of thing?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And then we define substantial progress.
Yeah.
So, um, and that's what we do for building permits, for example, um, along the same lines. The building permit, so long as they're calling for inspections, they're making progress, which you don't want to see as a project just completely abandoned.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, this is one of those that I've been looking, waiting for a long time to, to see come across, and I'm glad to see it, and I'll be happy to, uh, to vote for it when the time comes. I did have a technical question for the city attorney. Uh, on the last page at the top, we talk about notification. And I know there was talk at the state legislature about removing the newspaper notification requirement and replacing it with something else. A, did that ever get done? And B, I've got to assume it will get done at some point, and should we have language that is, that doesn't need to be changed when the state legislature finally gets, gets with the, uh, twenty-first century and, and makes that change? Sure. Councilman Plunkett, council, uh, there was another bill filed this last session, the regular session, that expired at the end of May, that would allow cities to post on their website in lieu of paying for newspaper notices.
their website in lieu of paying for newspaper notices. As you can fathom, the newspaper lobby is quite formidable, and that did not pass. What did pass was a bill saying that when we, when we pay a newspaper to print public notices, the newspaper must also make those notices available for free on their website. So that was sort of the compromise that was reached. But at this point, no, we still have to do this. And the PDD, as our city manager said, is really a customized zoning district. So all the normal rules that apply to zoning, such as notices and public hearings, apply to PDDs.
Agreed. So what I was suggesting is maybe we change the language to, you know, notification in the newspaper to notification, to as, you know, whatever the current standard is, so it doesn't have to be changed whenever that does get changed. Because, yeah, what, you know, I, I get that the notifications are free to the public, but the, you know, the 700 bucks a pop that we have to pay, you know, because as a business owner, I have to do it, too, you know, it's extortion, and it's a ridiculous sum for the amount of money that is, you know, you know, the reason, I'd say, I'd say the reason that they, the lobby is so strong is because they're taking that 700 bucks and putting it straight into lobbying efforts, so.
But yeah. I think it'd be easy before second reading to insert that the place of the hearing will be published in the official newspaper of the city or as allowed by state law. And that second part will allow the rules to change later without us having to come in and amend the ordinance.
Yeah, great. That's what I was looking for, something like that. And I'd be happy to move to approve.
I need to have a public hearing first, but I appreciate the thought. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one quick question. So, what is the timeframe if, if staff is discussing PDD, and it gets to a point where there's no, there's a wall, there's a stalemate? At how, what's that process like when you get to that point and it comes to P and Z? How far along in the process? Is that a three-month discussion, six-month discussion? At what point is it decided, okay, we're gonna deny it, we need to take the P and Z?
So ideally, we are compressing all of our review. Instead of reviewing this way, we're gonna review this way, so things are happening concurrently. Ideally, we would like to bring everything within 30 days. The, the developer will know pretty quickly. For example, we already have two in the pipeline that are just kind of chomping at the bit. And really, truly, had we discussed the grid system of streets, we maybe hadn't have needed a, a PDD for these two particular ones if we had a different block and grid system. Both of them understand that what they're asking, and, and both of them truly almost meet the intent of the underlying zoning. There's just a little bit of tweak here and there. I think the developer will understand pretty quickly. If staff cannot agree with something because of drainage, or we can't agree with something because there's no road connectivity or something like that, we'll know pretty quickly. And the developer can either, they know how much their ROI needs to be per lot that they're going to sell. And if we get to a point where, you know, staff needs five extra lots for drainage, then the developer's gonna know, nope, I'm gonna take my chances at planning commission. But some of these may come forward with a staff recommendation of denial based on X, Y, and Z. I hope we don't have to get that, but they will not sit around in staff's, in our files for very long.
Typically 30 days. Within 30 days, you'll know if it's gonna, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett, you, your light's still on. Councilmember Lee, I imagine you're through. If there's any more technical questions, I will open the public hearing. Madam Deputy City Secretary, do we have anybody wishes to comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
That's easy. I will close this public hearing, and I will now take a motion, Mr. Plunkett.
I move to approve with the additions of the change in the language on the notification requirements discussed earlier, as well as Councilmember Kirkland's concerns about the, what was that? I forget.
Substantial progress.
The substantial progress. Yes, thank you.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Meyer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Deputy City Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Unanimous vote. Moving on to 12D, consider action to approve resolution number R2023-103 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the appointment of the mayor of Moss to place for the Planning and Zoning Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing a effective date. Council, we, we are fairly short on P and Z, and to help us to ensure a quorum prior to appointing at least two, if, as many as five, in the next two months of P and Z, I wanted to ensure that we had enough people to, to meet the requirements for a quorum. With that, I will entertain a motion or comments or questions.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question, and this is totally concerning council, consideration of council. It has nothing to do whether, whether there's one, two, or all three appointments tonight, so I just want that to be established. I'm asking this in concern for council and consideration of council. I personally, and I, and I don't know if everyone could do it in the amount of time given to review the applications, but I have not, I feel council hasn't had enough time to review all the applications to even be able to confirm one, anyone. It has nothing to do with even who's been appointed. So what I'm asking, would you allow us to have more time, maybe at the next regular meeting, and table the item for tonight?
Certainly. The option to, to, to table is in the purview of this council, y'all the ones that carry the votes. Once again, I'm placing Mr. Moss up for consideration. He'd turn in his application in, in a timely fashion. Certainly, we can review the other applications. Mr. Moss is a citizen developer, and I thought he could bring some, some insight to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But if y'all choose to, to defer this, that's, y'all have, y'all have the power of the vote. I'm still submitting Mr. Moss for consideration. I will entertain a motion either way. I'll move to approve. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Can I ask, Councilmember Meyer, what the concern?
I have, I'm sorry, I have, I have a motion on, on the floor. After, after I get a second, you can ask any question.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Crouch?
So, Councilmember Meyer, I, well, I understood what you're asking is that you just wanna be able to see all of the applic, all of the applications? Because I think there was five or six, correct, that were, that were turned in.
Seven.
Seven.
For this position, yes.
And we have three positions open, so there's gonna be several that aren't gonna, that aren't gonna be selected regardless, right? And so I, I guess I don't understand, I mean, I kind of understand the concern, but I don't understand the concern.
In consideration that we do have seven, and all I have is a little, as we all probably do, a short list, and some of them really don't tell me much at all. Like, I would love to have a conversation with the candidate tonight, but I wasn't able, I didn't have time to have a conversation with anyone. So I take, I know that we all absolutely take the confirmation very seriously, but in order to do that, I need as much information as I can have in order to do that. So all I want is consideration, just to have a little more time to review, to really review all the applications, and then just address it at the next regular meeting.
At the time I, that I made the, made the appointment, there, there had only be three or four applications submitted, and eventually three additional, three or four additional had been submitted. And while, we will have our Board of Commissions Fair on the 26th, and then we'll be conducting interviews the 12th, I believe, of August? Could be, I could be wrong. I will confirm that. It's on our shared calendar. But yes, we will have an opportunity to interview everybody, I would hope. I would hope we get a lot of signups on the 26th. That address your concern. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments?
So I just, I just have a quick question with that calendar that you just stated. So we're supposed to have a joint planning and zoning and council meeting on August the 11th. From what I understood, we were going to try to appoint all the vacant seats by August the 8th. At least that's when our master calendar says. So are we seating and then there will be no vacancies in time for the interviews? I'm, I guess I'm lost. What, what is the plan?
Well, we're going, I mean, this is a quick process. We're going to have to have a, a Board of Commissions Fair to let people sign up. And I'm sorry, I cannot remember the date that we were scheduled our interviews, but it's immediately thereafter and prior to presenting all the recommendations for appointments.
So what I'm hearing you say is we should cancel the August 11th joint P and Z council meeting because you will not have seated everybody by that point?
I don't think we'll have, I don't think we'll have time to do that. I thought we'd already discussed that. I apologize if we had not.
No, okay.
Let me go to my calendar real quick, if I may. Yeah, can we move that up to the 25th, so we'll have a chance to conduct the interviews in an appropriate manner? Does that throw your schedule off?
The next P and Z meeting is at the end of the month, at August 27th. The council meeting is August 25th, so if you want to hold a joint meeting on the 25th for P and Z and council, we just need to notify P and Z and try to get a quorum.
Let's try to hold that prior to the regularly scheduled city council meeting and have that joint meeting with-
And you're intending to hold interviews?
Prior to that.
What day? Do you know what that is? Do you know what day that is?
Mayor, I'm showing the boards and commissions fair is on July 26th.
That's correct. But the interviews, do you show, show when the interviews are?
Typically, if I'm remembering correctly, we do the boards and commission fair, and then we do the interviews after the fair.
Yes.
So that would push us into August.
I will provide, I will give the city manager provide clarity on that. We want to make sure that we have the board commission fairs. We want to make sure we have an opportunity for council to interview all the candidates for all the boards and commissions. That'll be taken into care of over a two-day period. I think we've normally done it on Monday and a Wednesday, and we can knock that out. And then we can go ahead and have the meeting, the joint meeting between P and Z and city council, again on the 25th.
I'll, I'll reschedule that.
Yes, thank you. Moving fast, folks. I have a most, I have a comment from Councilmember Crouch.
I, I want to make sure there's clarity on the date for the joint P and Z and council meeting. Because I, I don't think we should delay that. We should, we need to have that as quickly as possible. If we need to have a, have a second one for the new members, then great. It's not gonna hurt, I don't think, to have two joint P and Z meetings. That, that'll just help. It's gonna be more time, but is that, am I understanding it incorrectly?
Well, I mean, and we, we can, we can look at it a couple of different ways. If y'all are comfortable having a joint P and Z meeting without having every member, all members of the P and Z seated by the time we have the meeting, I, I certainly see no issue with that. I mean, it's, council?
I just have a question. Do we have a joint meeting that's coming Thursday with P and Z council? No?
No, that was canceled because they're not fully seated.
Thank you.
So it'll be delayed? The joint P and Z will be delayed?
Yes, so for clarity, for clarity, and for full transparency.
Yes.
Full transparency. We had a conversation at agenda planning that all members would be seated by August the 8th, so that, at the August 8th city council meeting, so that we could have a joint P and Z meeting at August 11th. So if I'm understanding correctly now, we're going to postpone that because there's a, there's a boards and commissions fair and then other potential applicants that would come in. So no joint meeting August the 11th. We will potentially have a joint meeting in the September timeframe. I think I'm clear now.
Yeah, I, I just hate to delay the joint P and Z meeting until we get them all on if we need. It's totally up to you, Mayor.
May I make a suggestion that maybe, you know, you and the city manager go back and look at the dates? Because I feel like we probably could have a meeting early August. I just think maybe y'all need to sit down and look at the calendar together.
I, I'd appreciate that because we, we really need to get this calendar together. We have a lot of things on our plate between now and the start of the new fiscal year, and, and points to the boards and commissions are extraordinarily important.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we give council an opportunity to look over at all the applications and, and provide their recommendations as we move forward. I certainly don't want to throw off any of our planning schedules, and I certainly don't want to throw off your schedule, Madam City Manager, because I know you have a lot of things on your plate. But I want to make sure we're real thorough on this. I also don't want to delay it unnecessarily. But again, sometimes the wheels of government move slowly to ensure we make the appropriate decision.
Because I, I mean, looking at the calendar, July 26th is the board and commission fair. That leaves about nine or 10 days for us to schedule an interview between then and the 8th. And then after the 8th, I don't see why we couldn't schedule the joint meeting sometime between the 8th and our next council meeting. So I just think if you guys, yeah, right.
That's, that's the initial discussion we had to, to seat by the 8th and then joint meet at the 11th.
Y'all figure it out. I think if y'all sit down.
And we'll, and we'll send up early notice, and I will provide the clarity that we need. Okay, but no further discussion. I have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett and a second by Councilmember Crouch. There's no further discussion. Madam Deputy City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, council. I appreciate it. We still have one item on our agenda in executive session, so we will, it is 8:35. We will move back into executive session. Thank you, Colin. It is 9:40. We're out of executive session. We are now to the last item, item 13. Can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Crouch. We are adjourned.